Good evening. Let's call the Board of the School Board session of June 10th to order. Sarah, would you please call the roll?
Aldrich.
Here.
Christiansen.
Here.
McKeon.
Good evening.
Peterson.
Tomzik.
Here.
Tucker.
Here.
And Baurman.
Yes ma'am. Would you all please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I don't think we have any We Are Shockbees Schools items tonight, so we're going to skip on to item four. Consideration of the agenda presented, we're going to make one change. We're going to ask Himani to be leadoff batter tonight. So we'll move forward once we get into the actual agenda. Other than that, any real changes? Any comments from anyone else at this point on the agenda? All right. I will look for a motion to accept the agenda as presented with that one change.
I so will.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you. Joe.
Joe.
We'll put a discussion. All those in favor, say "Hi."
Hi.
Those opposed? All right. We have our agenda, so instead of moving to item five, Himani, you want to come on up?
Perfect.
So Himani Yoshi is going to present to us that we have a copy of the presentation. It's going to be on the screen. And we're very much looking forward to it.
Thank you. Good evening, and thank you for having me. And I'm really excited to share what I've been working on this past semester. I had signed on to an internship through the CAPS program, the Business CAPS Program, in quality improvement at Scott County with Mr. C. Powers in the audience. So I wanted to give a quick shout out. I'm really grateful for your support and being here today as well. So what I did during that time, this was my overarching project. I started on day one with a decision to make on what I wanted to research, and then developed from there what I think is potentially a gap in our community that we could have some suggestions to bring the county and the schools together to combat that or to come up with some suggestions and solutions. So I'd like to take you through that today. And we're looking at connected kids in Scott County. So the impact that I wanted to look at, and I looked at this big question, was how does kids connected to non-parental adults in the community have a short-term and long-term impact on their social, behavioral, and mental health? So looking at it in a really holistic manner. I went through a pretty long process, since I did it over the span of about three months. And I took it in little steps. So the first thing I did is I tried out a lot of different topics that I thought would be helpful to research that were presented to me. I said, "We need a little more data about this in the community, see how it works in Scott County." And what spoke to me the most was really students, because I am a student and all of my friends are students. And I thought it would be really cool, from my perspective, to see what's going on and how I can help develop or make any changes in that. So I took a look at some research, and I spend a lot of time doing this. I looked at college studies and background information. Most specifically, the two sources I pulled from the most were Harvard Center for the Developing Child, as well as an Oregon community study where they did OST, or out-of-school time. And you can think of like a YMCA where it's non-academic after-school time, where kids spend a lot of one-on-one time or group time with an adult that isn't their parent. And they came to a lot of insightful conclusions that I wanted to share with everyone today as well. The next step of data that I took a look at was more specific to our community. And I looked at the 2016 Minnesota Student Survey data, as well as the 2013 one. And I wish I could see the upcoming results from this year's, but we'll have to wait on that. But I looked at what data was there and maybe what correlation I could find, what trends I saw, to see how it fit into the bigger picture of the other research I had collected. And finally, looking at drawing some conclusions and potential suggestions that we could implement in the school district as well as in the county. So I wanted to start by defining what exactly that non-parental figure looks like. Because I think for Shockbees Schools, it's really easy. There's teachers, you know, in the district that obviously they spend a lot of time with students, but it's more than just them. This is a community-wide issue or concept where you're looking at coaches, adult leaders, church leaders, volunteers. At every turn. It doesn't just mean that they're coming to school and interacting with these people. And maybe it's something that if we can push more into the community, the greater county community, we can get some more impact there as well. So I wanted to showcase how vast that impact can be, because you can't really locate where every non-parental adult character is in a child's life. So I wanted to start by taking a look at some of the student survey data in Minnesota. I know you have the printout in front of you as well, but it is a little bit hard to see, so I want to walk through it a little step by step. The first question that, this is from the 2016 one. I looked at grade five and grade 11 for both of these questions. And the first one is, "How much do you feel a teacher or other adults at school care about you?" And they were able to answer, given on a scale, either "not at all," "a little," "some," "quite a bit," or "very much." Now, I found this data to be very staggering to me, because I did personally feel this way. But as a collective, in grade five, there were about 40% of students that felt at school that they were being very, very supported. But if you took a look and I scrolled down to grade 11, there was a sharp decrease in the amount of students that felt they were very much supported in the school, cutting it down to 16%. So really, that drastic drop, especially within schools, was shocking to me. So I looked a little bit further into it. The second question at the bottom, "How much do you feel that adults in your community feel about you?" Not just the school. Bringing, opening that up a little bit. And it went from about 30% down to 15%, cutting it nearly in half. And to me, then, the only conclusion I could come up with this, or come up from this data, was as kids grow older, they feel less connected to non-parental adults in the community. And that was something I felt personally, since I had always received the support of non-parental adults in my community, I felt it essential. And I took a deeper look into what that could mean for other students as well. And so from the Harvard Center of the Developing Child, I looked at early childhood brain development and how this type of connection that we're potentially seeing a gap in our community with, how it can really benefit someone. And I think this opened my eyes to how vast and impressive it is to me to see how one individual in a student's life can impact so many different areas. And I came up with three specifically, or five specifically, physical, social, emotional, behavioral, and intellectual. And it's, again, a very holistic situation. That it's not just about in school, if they're with a teacher and they have a certain connection. It's not just an academic trend. This is something that impacts all aspects of their lives. One of the, this anecdote that I kind of want to share with you from that study really stuck out to me, saying that positive early experiences, support from adults, and the development of adaptive skills can counterbalance the lifelong consequences of adversity. And more specifically, what stood out to me from there was support counterbalances adversity. And essentially, the long-term impact that it has on a student isn't just during the time that they spend with this non-parental adult. It extends into their greater lifetime and then their future. And so it's important to invest some energy into this as well. So I wanted to look at some specific positive impacts here. The first being with self-confidence. And all of these impacts, dig deeper into those five main core areas. Self-confidence, in that study, were found 21% less likely to have been bullied in the past month or to have bullied in the past month. There was a greater achievement in school and the workplace, where 10% were more likely to show interest in learning and participating in after-school activities.
Sorry, ma'am, I hate to interrupt you, because you're doing great. But give me context, 21% of what?
Of the students.
Something responded, what?
Yes. So the students in the Harvard Center of Child Development Study, of the study that they did, that their subjects or their students that they were working with, this is the overall trend that they saw in the long term.
But these are students who had some sort of interaction with non-parental adults or none?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
So this is with the positive impacts of having a non-parental adult
There you go.
in their life during the developing stages. So this is, the stages that we're looking at are in their early life, their early childhood developments, we're looking at kind of more infancy, and then adolescence, so more of the middle school, the high school age as well.
Got it. Thank you.
Yes, no problem. Thank you, and feel free to ask any questions. Next would be conflict resolution. There is an improvement in how students were handling situations of conflict, both physically and mentally as well. There is a greater motivation to learn. 73% were more likely to show interest in taking initiative in their community and volunteering, controlling aggressive impulses. 11% were more likely to stay calm and controlled in that type of a situation. And sound mental health, which I think is so important in those stages of adolescence and infancy, where you're really developing your personality and you're in a very vulnerable situation. Where 28% were less likely to feel sad or depressed. So given all of this information, it was apparent to me that because these overall long-term and short-term impacts that a non-parental connection to a student can have in their life, knowing the positive impacts and seeing that kind of gap in our community from that Minnesota Student Survey data, I wanted to bring together and see what I could do about it in the short time that I had in my internship. So there was an initial presentation that I did give between Shockbees School District and Scott County, where Superintendent Redman was there. And we had a good conversation about what could potentially be done between the schools and the county to foster some more of these relationships, to get the most out of it, because we have such a hand in those connections. And between my different research components that I had, there were five different main ways that both the county and the school district can combine forces with to be able to implement in the community. And the first one being expressing care. I think when I think about my personal experience of growing up, I had a good conversation too with my mentor about, "I feel like I'm pretty privileged when it comes to that. I have a very supportive family, a very stable home situation. All of my teachers and community adults have supported me. And it's meant a lot to me, and I dedicate a lot of my personal accomplishments and what I find that I did well to those individuals. And it was all because I felt like there was someone that was there to support me. And from there, the opportunities that I had, I reached out for. And what a lot of students that I realized through this research and through doing some interviews and observing my peers is that the students that didn't have that, they were less likely to take initiative and jump at opportunities that they would have had otherwise. And so expressing that care is the first step to making sure that that non-parental adult is approachable to be able to have those opportunities. Because for me, I was really lucky that I had that stable home and parental support, but not everyone does. The next is to share power. When working with a student or a child, if you are a coach, a volunteer, or a community member and adult, it's important to recognize that in that relationship, to have an effective relationship with that student, it's not that it's controlling. So you can think of, you know, your parents telling you, "Well, it's a right or wrong. You know, I'm telling you that you should do this." It's more of a control. And that's where, you know, students are more likely to back away in their teenage years and say, "I'm going to be a little more independent now." And that's, I think, too contributing to that trend we saw from fifth grade to 11th grade in the data. They're just less likely to approach an adult because they feel like it's more of a controlling situation than having a shared power in the situation. Next is providing that support. And I bring that back to my personal experience and how I felt I had that support throughout growing up and in schools and outside of school. And that's, again, is essential to having those relationships as well. As expanding the possibilities. And I talked a little bit about how I had to, you know, I didn't really have to have someone reach out to me. I took initiative and I saw an opportunity. For example, with my internship, I knew I wanted to try something new and I didn't feel, I felt like I had care and shared power and provided support in the community to take that first step. But since not all students do, sometimes it's meaning that that adult is reaching out to a student that they know they can help out, and it's them taking that first step instead. And challenging growth. I had a conversation with my mom, who works in St. Paul City Schools, and they have a, they're in a neighborhood where a lot of the students don't have stable homes and aren't necessarily very motivated to learn. And one of the key pieces of that interview that I took away was, one of the facets of their teaching style is that they always hold high expectations, regardless of where that student is in their life, regardless of what they're facing. Because that challenging growth is another way of showing care and also showing that they have the support. Because if you hold those expectations, they're more likely to hold those expectations for themselves as well.
Can I?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, yeah, I think it's great that, yep, schools and the county are partnering, but would the city fit into this equation at all?
I think it could. The reason I think that the county and the schools are a really good pairing is, A, obviously Shockbees Schools is dealing with children all the time, and they have an obvious connection with teachers to students all the time. And the county has a lot of programs that outreach towards students as well. So I figured there's an easier, more effective tie-in there. But if there was an opportunity that I'm not aware of within the city, that could be a really great time to make this happen as well. I would say that that's something that everyone should maybe put a little more effort and energy into, so that we can expand the impact that we could have there too.
You might want to follow this up, but the city council member, if you ever see one?
I'd love to. I would love to. I'll take this with me wherever I go from now on. Which kind of leads me into my next point. This is something that you don't have to be part of the county or the schools. You could be part of the city to do this. When it comes to growth mindset, and that ties a little bit into challenging growth. And growth mindset for those who aren't very familiar with it. Most people believe that their most basic abilities are developed through dedication and hard work, and that those are just the starting point. And this creates a lot of love of learning and resilience, and it promotes taking initiative and recognizing that just because you're not, you know, for example, very, very simple terms, "I'm not great at math. I was just, you know, some people are, I'm not." It's not, the growth mindset is the opposite of that, saying, "It's not a fixed mindset. It's that I have an opportunity to learn how to be better at something." And having those expectations is another. Growth mindset is a great facet to be able to foster those relationships with. I wanted to bring up a little bit of a connection. I think this goes back to Mr. Christiansen's question about what type of organizations should get involved in this most, and who is able to have a hand in it. And when I was at the county, I was doing my internship for the county, and I ended up putting a little piece of this into their annual performance report that goes to the state. And the values being safe, healthy, and livable. And I think that these values are something that not only the county reflects, but Shockbees Schools, the city, and really every individual in it reflects and wants to strive towards. And so this is a goal of every member in the community, and I think it's something that should be reached out to, not just the schools, not just the city, but also to all adults in the community. A lot of, a lot of the adults that students like myself run into are volunteers or their coaches and their parents. And if, you know, if it's not your own parent, it's a person that you might admire. And I think it's important that it's not just here that it's heard, but it's something that's a goal of the community to make sure that students have someone they can reach out to. And I want to open up to both the audience and the school board if you have any questions about the research or the potential partnership.
I'm very curious in that I suspect that the county has many programs for students. I know of one, extension, that's all I know. So I bet there's more out there going on that I have no idea of. And I guess finding out that would be an important step, I think.
Absolutely. And I think why I was able to come to that conclusion very quickly is because I'm involved in the extension program. And I don't think if others aren't, it's hard to recognize sometimes where those roots are from. I'm personally involved in the 4H community and the Scott County Extension Committee. And so I had a really, you know, obvious aha moment. "Oh, the county does do work, but not everyone knows that." Sometimes it's raising a little bit of awareness about it too. So if there were other programs or new programs that could be formulated that have a clearer partnership or clear awareness, I think that would only help the situation.
The survey, the 2016 survey about people caring, is there surveys from previous years, and has those numbers changed, if there was?
I took a look at the 2013 Student Survey data as well, and saw the same trend from grade five to grade 11. I just want to use this because it was more relevant. It was more as far as the year.
But is there any from like 20 years ago? Because I'd be really curious to see how things have changed.
I didn't look that far back. And then what I think would be interesting there too is if we see the change from, say, grade five to grade 11 in those years, if they're the same, the trend could be the same, but how drastic is it, right? What has changed since that? And I had a short timeframe to do this research, but it's something I'd be more interested to look into as well.
Another question.
You know, I applaud the project, and I think some of it's kind of intuitive. I think the methodology went through validates, like I said, some things that maybe you just kind of assumed to be the case. The more support you have, the more successful as a child or as a young adult you're going to be. It just seems intuitive. And I think we all probably can think in our own lives of people in schools or out of schools who we can name to this day that were important to us, whether it's a teacher or a coach, or Mrs. Holloway, for me, something when I was little that was just a neighbor. And she had a very, you know, positive influence on me. So I think it's just, it's great data, it's very intuitive. My question for you though, is how do you take something that seems intuitive, seems to make sense, the literature to support the idea, how do you systematize it? How do you actually make it where you can say, "Okay, we understand the value." How to turn it into something that's actionable versus, "Yeah, it's just, it makes sense. But what do we do about it?"
Right. And I think that was my initial goal, because I researched it and I realized there's a gap. My project wasn't actually to come to the board or come to the county and say, "Here's what we could do about it, and here's how you foster those relationships." My job was just to see what's going on. And I'm glad I was able to take that next step, because not a lot of students have that opportunity. And being in a position of being a student that's around a lot of non-parental adults, I felt that was important. And so my personal first step to do that, and again, this isn't something that everyone can do, because not everyone has the time to do this, but I brought together my initial presentation was with Shockbees Schools members, including Superintendent Redman, as well as individuals from the county. So our county administrator, Leslie Vermillion, as well as quality improvement manager, Christine Harder, who is my mentor. And we sat together and I gave this presentation. And afterwards, that slide about the joint community. For me, that was more about saying, "We're here in a room together right now. What can we bring of it? What conversations can we have now that we haven't had before?" And I'm really happy and glad to say that I met my goal. And we're now, both Shockbees Schools and Scott County, is working together to see how this can, first of all, be measured. I think that was the first question that Superintendent Redman had brought up, was is there a way right now that this is being measured of how, you know, and it's hard to measure. How do you recognize how many students in the community feel connected to a non-parental adult? That's not something you can throw on a fifth grader's student survey and expect them to understand, right? It's hard data to collect. And how is there a way that we can measure that to be able to see and track progress, to see and track what trends there are, and then take the best action forward from there? And I think that would be the next step.
Yeah. So I'm Leslie Vermillion, the county administrator. So thanks for wanting, having Himani present tonight. She presented to the county board last Tuesday. And I know Commissioner Beard and Commissioner Brackey were just, it was just awesome. But Superintendent, yes. Superintendent Redman and I met on this. We talked about, I think, some opportunities that I think Chris is going to meet. But I know right now, some of your high school staff and our staff are meeting and talking about some after-school grants through the Department of Ed and HHS. So I think there's some opportunities by just communication and using some data like this. How do we support it? I have a sophomore in your school district, and I was telling Superintendent Redman, just the one day the academy held an after-school game day, board games, computer games, for three days, I heard nothing about Mr. Terrance Smash, just all of Smash Brothers. Just that little bit of seeing that human side of them and the interaction, the energy that some of those kids came away from. Especially, he's a sped kid, so he's, you know, engagement sometimes is difficult for him to begin with. But I'm telling you, leading up to that after it and the next one. And so there's some opportunities, I think, we have through some of these grants with this data, just working together and talking, even through our academies, what Himani's doing. We don't have a lot of programs for kids. We have extension. And I'll be honest, extension quite often is on our chopping block for is that something we continue to fund in the priorities of the county? And yet, I think if you were to talk to some of our staff today, this 50% to 60% of our kids in high school feeling connected to an adult, that's concerning when almost half of them don't. And so what are things we can do as a community? And I loved how she put it up there. As a community, not just government one way or the other, to support this. And so we're very appreciative of the work. We're hoping she'll come back this summer and continue some of that work. And hope there are some ways we can build on this to continue to work with our kids, so.
Yeah, so I think the first step is really sparking conversation, bringing the right people into the safer room for me. Makes good sense.
What comments?
Nice job. Thank you.
Thank you for the project. Thank you for sponsoring the project. And thank you for coming tonight to present. What I don't want to see this do is just, you know, fall on deaf ears and just beg. Yeah, sit there. You've started the conversation. I'm hoping there's things that we as a district, we as partners, can build upon this and, like I said, turn into something that's actionable. Because clearly, it's something that makes a difference. Your data shows that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Hold on, Mike.
Well, I was just going to say, it's, this is a great example of learning outside the classroom. We've got lots of examples and just doing real-life learning and research and bringing it to people. And so thank you for being willing to do that. Is this your first presentation as an actual graduate of high school?
Yes. I'm now doing this as a college student, so I don't know if I fit in this bubble anymore.
Thank you, and congratulations. I guess one to Sabre. That's a lot to Sabre, yeah.
That is true. Absolutely. I'm not going far, I'll be back.
Where are you going?
I'm going to University of St. Thomas.
Okay.
Okay.
You know they're getting booted out of the county.
Yes. So my fear is now that I'm there, we're going to start losing all of our games. Thank you for having me.
All right. We will take back up the schedule or the agenda as we had it outlined. Jeff, you want to come on up or get off? Pick up with some budget discussion.
All right.
You could roll it.
Okay.
Or you want to roll it?
Sure.
Yeah, this one, she said she gave her own copies there. I almost printed it out.
I know. I was working from home.
Okay, ready?
Yep.
So Julie just commented, "Boy, that's a tough act to follow." I said, "Julie, yours will be easy, because you follow me." So just want to present tonight the preliminary budget for the next school year. And then we'll have you actually approve this budget. You've got to approve the budget by July 1st, start of March. And, you know, I should say, preliminary means, especially for new board members, we will come back and I think a lot of the, probably October, November kind of timeframe. But we'll have, you know, we built the budget with kind of current staff, using those assumptions on where they may be on the salary schedule. And we'll have some staff turnover. So basically, the revision will involve updating the current staff that's now in place for the 1928 school year. So I would say there shouldn't be, other than that, there shouldn't be real big swings in the numbers that are presented here in the preliminary.
I want to ask a question that might point out my ignorance, but so be it. Since really, you didn't know how much money we were going to have until everything was decided in the state, and that's pretty recently. So do you do this all preliminarily and then go back and plug in numbers? Or how does that work? That never made sense.
You know what? When I get to the, probably the slide after this, I'll cover that. That's a really good, that's a good question. So with what we built in, and then that budget book that I presented, you've got the draft of the budget book. You kind of go through there, and that builds in all the assumptions that are used to build the budget. So with those assumptions, we present these kind of, these numbers here. So the general fund, we look like we are adding to fund balance. So $3.4 million beginning projected. We think that we'll have a balanced budget. A lot of that is a land sale that's built in. And that projected fund equity then goes to 4.6 at the end of the year. And we'll get back and, I think, answer your questions.
All right.
And we present all of the governmental funds here. So food service and community services, they're all their special revenue funds when we get the audit report. And I'll just comment, you know, they're holding, we look at community services, beginning projected $313,000. It's pretty much a flat budget. Not so with food service. And we're going to take a good, hard look at that over the summer. We had some big changes in participation. And so we need to kind of find out why. And, you know, we kind of built the budget then, okay, we'll leave kind of this current step in place. leave kind of this current staff in place. But we may not, as we really analyze what happened with our participation really at the middle schools, is where we saw the decrease. So we can do this now. We have a fund balance, you know, $589,000 fund balance. If that was a real small fund balance, I might be saying we're going to fix this right now. But this just gives us some time. That is a pretty healthy fund balance for that size of fund. Then we see the other two governmental funds, the building construction, that's just going to wind down. It's going to take care of the projects that are left completing the high school, some other district-wide projects. And then our debt services simply our fund that pays our debt, that amortizes our bond principal and bond interest. So I would say that we're in a pretty healthy situation in that general fund balance. We're going to continue to enhance that, enhance that fund balance. So I think, Julie, this may get to your question. So, yeah, we start building this budget in, probably in January, February. And we did, I think I came to the board and said, here's the assumptions that we're using to build the budget. So it had revenue assumptions, expenditure assumptions. This is the key one, this basic formula allowance. And we did use an assumption that said it would increase by 2%. Okay? And it did. It did. But I can tell you, there's probably, there's been a lot of years where I would be at this time of the year, and they haven't completed their work. And so we say it's 2%. Here's our assumption. And then we find out what happened. So this time, we knew. So we had built the budget, and now we're kind of following the legislature and, yep, as things worked out, our assumptions were earned.
And if it had been 0%, then you have to go back and start deciding how to redo things. Is that how that works?
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, if it had been anything other than what we assume.
Yeah, true.
Whether it's that drastic, yeah, exactly. So you start with your assumptions and build accordingly.
And your draft budget might look different. I might not have been as completed as it looks now. But, yeah, we would have gone back and, oh, we got a 1%. That means this. And we're going to try to mitigate, let's, you know, mitigate the impacts of that with doing this and this. So, but it pretty much went, I think, as we put the assumptions together back in January, February, I think things have played out along those lines. So the other, the other big piece along, so that's, going back to that, that's 60% of our general fund revenue, where that formula ends up. But then that's attached to our enrollment. And so this is the other key, the other key piece of trying to project, well, not only revenues, but expenditures as well. Because if you look at student enrollment, factoring into most of the general fund revenue, approximately 80% of general fund revenue is linked to enrollment. So that is either directly or indirectly, what that final revenue piece is, the revenue number in the general fund, really ties back to enrollment.
Now, obviously, we're not going to know what that number is till?
October.
Yeah, October.
Well, you know what?
How confident are you in the 82, 82?
I think that this time, we've been more conservative. I think that we probably weren't last year. And you know that we came to the board as one of our budget revisions?
Right.
When we did come, because we, and we wrote down, you know, fair amount, pretty significant numbers.
Right.
So I think that, and Mike, you can probably talk to this, but we are using a much more conservative approach this year. So I feel much better about this number than, you know, go ahead.
It's funny, Joe, I started working on a graphic in my life from January to May. I worry about the legislature. Then from May to October 1, I worry about enrollment. So we do.
No, that makes sense.
Yeah, it's hugely important for the budget. But, yeah, as Jeff said, we're working to refine those models and do the best we can as far as the information coming in. But it's an imperfect science.
Oh, I know that.
And we want to do it conservatively. And so we're hopeful. But right now, you know, we're even looking at kindergarten and kind of past trends. We're a little bit behind some of those. So we are even monitoring it, you know, kind of week by week. But in some regards, there's not much you can do until you get to those, you know, those open houses in August and you see who's there. And then even day one of school, and then even sometimes a couple of weeks into the school year, so.
And so it really isn't, it's not even October 1 that we, well, we know what the October 1 enrollment is obviously. But what that final number is, we count, we won't know, we won't know this year's until, until we do the final report in December of this year. So December 2019, we'll have that final number that we require. Because you're looking at, you know, someone might, they might be here October 1, but they leave in November. So you get a piece of that student, and then they go away the rest of the year.
Well, you kind of hope that probably by mid-September, you would be closer than now.
Yeah. But the point being, October 1, yeah, we probably have, is this number in the ballpark or didn't we?
Yeah. And we've started to do a lot of work just in terms of enrollment trends and growth. And are there things that are predictable? And we saw, you know, and some of those have historic trends. But now we're even looking at, you know, something like the academies at the high school. And it appears our enrollment actually stayed stronger and grew more at the high school than it had in past years. Now, is that attributable to the academies? Possibly. One year is not a, you know, long-term study. But that's, you know, so we're even trying to, you know, figure out, are there different ages, different grades? Are there certain things? And so, yeah, you've hit on, yeah, that's my, well, at this time of year, that's my biggest worry, so.
And certainly, when we come back with the revised budget, it will have looked really hard at that enrollment that we'll have later.
How much are we looking at for increase, increase from last year?
So right there, you see 18, 19 projected, 82, 45, and we're going up to 82, 81. So a slight, a slight increase. But you can see what happened from 17, 18 to what we think we'll end up with in the current year. A lot of that was at the Kennedy elementary block?
The decrease.
Yeah.
And we're looking at an increase in ninth grade, I believe, if I'm remembering.
Yeah. Yeah, that's built in. You get the kids from.
But it becomes usual, I think.
Yeah. Yeah. But we still build in some attrition for the secondary schools. They can drop 100 kids from October.
Okay. So what percentage-wise are we looking at here during that, as during the strong suit?
Maybe half a percent.
About that.
Yeah, because it's 40, 50 out of 80. So it's half a percent.
Okay. So then, this gets back duty to, so legislation, all these things are, have become a part of this budget, except for maybe the last one. But basic general education aid, so we reflected that 2% increase. We're going to see a new category of special education aid called cross-subsidy reduction aid. So I think I've taken that into account in our budget.
So that element is built into this draft?
So, yeah.
In a favorable way?
Yeah.
This is a favorable impact for?
Oh, yes.
Do we know how significant?
Yeah, I think that this is about $32 per student, so about 167,000. But I actually have a little bit more built in the budget than MDE has right now, if you look at the state runs, because they don't know about some of the staffing changes we did this year, some of the reallocations for special education, transportation, that can generate some additional numbers. But special education is another one. I kind of like enrollment, but we, we just thought, we just landed on our final number, special education aid for last year at the beginning of May. So MDE had final reports. So you almost run, almost run the full year before you know. So that is a, because that's a pretty big piece of revenue. I'll work with the auditors in October, and I'll say, here's what our number is going to be. And they'll say, well, look at these runs, and we'll agree on what that number is, and we book it. And then it's plus or minus.
You're already kicking your head in the corporate world.
I don't have to wait that long. Usually, I do some accruals at the end of the year, and I find out in February, March, if how accurate it is.
And that money was actually spent contractually.
Well, I'd already spent it all, so.
It's not a lot of fun from our standpoint, either.
I can only imagine.
Everybody thinks we'll find a decision.
And to Reggie's point, that special ed cross-subsidy continues into the following year.
Right. Oh, yeah.
So it's very favorable this year, next year.
Yep.
So it's a great point.
Everybody know what the cross-subsidy is? Took me a while.
Couple of years.
Money borrowed from regular aid?
Yeah. Special ed is underfunded and more expensive. Certainly worthwhile and well-needed, obviously. But it's money that's taken from the general aid to fund special ed needs.
In our district level, cross-subsidy, don't quote me on the numbers, is about 8 million a year. Is that about right?
From what I booked, that was 10 and 1/2 million from the state and 18 and 1/2 million that was budgeted.
So there you go, about eight. So, I mean, that's not a, that's not a big.
It's like an eliminate that.
No, no, no. But it's positive, is what I was getting at. That this change is only positive for our district.
Right.
And as Mike was saying, it's something that continues. So we're happy.
Yeah.
Because it's been underfunded and, yeah, underfunded for years.
And Jeff had the slide where it was, showed the last four or five years of settlements and being 2%, 2%, 2%. But that was just the headline, right? The 2% varies differently. Some years, it's 2% and that's it. Other years, it's 2%. Like this year, with extra money there. So it's, well, the headline's still 2%. 2% doesn't equal the same thing. So it can be very misleading.
When our expenses are growing fast.
Yeah.
With the general aid, general ed aid increase, will that cover the project, you know, I know we're making a lot of assumptions here. Would that cover necessarily the increase to the budget?
Yeah. I think, I think you go, not just the 2%, but everything that, everything that we built into the budget. So I go back to the first slide. So the general fund, we're seeing a positive, we're seeing a surplus there. Revenue is over.
Okay.
Jeff, before we move on from that cross subsidy, just want to be clear that $8 million cross subsidy isn't going away. We're celebrating that it's going to stay at 8 million each of the next two years, and it's not going to get any worse. So it's good news, but far from problem solved.
Sometimes not getting worse is a good thing.
Well, I'm happy. I'd be happier if, yeah.
The bleeding will continue.
Yes.
So just to continue on here, school safety aid, there's a one-time appropriation, up to 30 million. It'll be contingent on the FY19 state fund balance. So I did not build anything into our budget with this funding piece.
I recall, we don't have, not only is it contingent upon the state fund balance, but they didn't provide, correct me if I'm wrong, any rules as far as how we're going to tap into it. We don't know if it's going to be the lottery, it's going to be first come, first served, or do we?
I think it's per pupil.
Everybody gets this.
Yeah. Like they did that the last time at the employer. We'll appropriate X amount of money and it's a.
The lottery this time was, though, that it had to be, it wasn't the first thing in line for that state fund balance on June 30. It was the second or third thing in line. So, and you could get part of it depending on that fund balance.
Do you know, I can't do this math because I don't know how many students are in Minnesota, but what would this be per student? Do we have any idea?
You know what? I always use, it's a little less than that now, but I've always used like a million, completely.
So it could be?
As much as.
Per pupil.
Another buck seven each. In total, yeah. Welcome to the board games.
The bleeding will stop.
So again, let's be clear, this is not built into the budget yet, assuming it happens. It could be roughly the same impact in a positive way as the cross subsidy production. About a buck 70. So it's $30.
Yeah.
32, so.
And that's for a specific purpose.
Understood. But we would, it would allow us to shift expenses from something we're currently spending on to something else.
Yeah. Yeah. I guess I look at this a little different than if we get this money.
Yeah.
We're probably, yeah, we could maybe shift something we're doing. But I think, for the most part, it might be that we're going to fix some, we're going to spend.
That's fine, too.
So I mean, does this go for like fire alarms or school resource officers or gas metal detectors?
All of, probably all. Yeah. Mike, have you seen specifics and?
It's very wide open in terms of school safety funding, similar to previous school safety funding. Everything from counselors to liaison officers to what you would call hardening of buildings or doing things like that. But again, the key there is that's one-time money.
Okay.
And I'm not suggesting we go there with.
No, no. But that's, no, great question.
And the last one there's kind of a big deal. So it will require board control of all extracurricular activity funds. So what that means is, right now, we probably didn't even pay attention to it when we had the auditors here last year.
It's more of the three books we.
So we have a, you have your regular CAFR audit, and we have student activity audit, because we have these, you know, student council, just various programs, mostly at the secondary level. I think all of ours are. A few at the men's school, mostly at the high school. So they're just separate, it's like a separate reporting entity. So it's, student activity, accounting, auditors come and audit that, just like they do our regular CAFR. So those expenditures now have to be combined with, and they're going to show up in the general fund. So that'll happen, it's going to be in effect on July 1. So I did build in, I'm going to say it's $300,000 of revenue and expense, not built into our budget, but we will be, we're going to start doing the accounting correctly in July 1. When we revise the budget, we'll show, we now have these accounts built into the budget.
Jeff, it's basically money in and money out. So it's not going to have an impact on our overall budget.
Right. Yep.
But it is, there used to be, you can pick one of two accounting systems. You no longer can. This one's now mandated. We had been using the other one, so there is a shift for all of our activity accounts. And Jeff and his team is working with, you know, our activities department and our athletics department on what does that mean, which would be our coaches and activity directors to be in compliance with that.
Okay. And just a couple of charts here that show, so again, this kind of reflects that big, basic funding form of the month. Majority of our dollars coming from the state. And then we show our expenditures. And I think when I'm here doing our monthly report, I talk about, we're really tracking those salaries and benefits. As you can see, that's about 78% of our total expense in the general fund. And then the, I've got the unassigned financial position. So you can see we were FY17 at 691. We're building that up, 2.6, up to 2.6 at the end of this year. I think, well, I'll say it now, I think we're going to be a little bit better than that. And then projecting what we've got in the budget for FY20, an increase up to 2.7. But if we're better in, at June 30, 19, we'll have a better number there for FY20. And then, the breakdown, I was going to say, I put the same term in here, but no, this doesn't break down. So that first sheet that has the 4.7, this is the breakdown non-spendable and restricted. This restricted takes a jump in 1920 because of the land sale. So those proceeds go to the restricted fund, our assigned fund balance. And then one that I think matters most is the, is the unassigned, and that's that 2.7. Next steps, we're taking this to the CFAC group to review on Wednesday night, get their feedback and comments, and then we'll ask the board to approve the budget on June 24.
Questions for Jeff? I just have one more inside the budget. Last year, or earlier this year, I should say, we adjusted the utilities. Now that we have a full year of utilities at the new high school, are we, how confident are you that the numbers in the budget are going to be somewhat accurate?
Yeah, real confident. So, yeah, we did an analysis when we, when we did that change. We just hadn't kept up with price increases and so on. So we built in an inflator for this year as well. So I think that's, and that can be a big number. When you, outside of, outside of salaries and benefits, that piece of the purchase services, utilities is pretty significant.
That's why, one of the first things I look at, this would be dependent to our mother nature. Of course.
Yeah. For sure. I would say it's, I feel confident.
Jeff, I have one, well, I guess one's a comment and one's a question. I'm going to miss the next meeting, so there's your questions I would ask. These are questions I would ask then. I want to reemphasize or reiterate that we've gone into this, our approach is to be conservative in our assumptions, which is the appropriate approach in my opinion. So that, for example, we think there's upside even this year in terms of where we're headed.
Right.
So we go into it being conservative in our assumptions and in our plan. If that's a correct statement. Thing I wanted to confirm was, in the past we've done this, I see we've continued it, I'm actually going to the line out, it's one ninety-seven in the budget, which I know we're going to improve next week, it's the contingency line. So we're still building in, in this case it's a fairly small amount. But we're still building in.
Right, a little bit of a.
Staffing.
Exactly.
Staffing.
Things just move, we know that. But overall, with our conservative approach, contingency and the fact we think there's still some upside this year, my takeaway is that we're looking for, again, things can change, but we're looking for a positive or upside in the numbers even next year.
Right.
Before we could end this year.
Right.
Want to go?
Nope.
And I also want to say, I want to thank you and the team. Excellent budget book. I went through it like I'm sure everyone else did, in great detail. I really didn't have questions because it was presented so well. But I also know, now having worked with you for the past year and a half, whoever's been, how diligent you and your team are, I want to thank you very much for that. Have a great decree of confidence in terms of our numbers and where we're at, where we're headed, so please cheer up your team. Thank you very much.
I would echo that too. The budget book makes everything so easy to read and follow that it's not a, hey, help me interpret this. So thank you and your team.
You bet.
Thank you.
Anything else for Jeff? All right, at this point, we'll look through it in a couple weeks.
All right.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you. All right, let's pick up with item six point one. I think Mike's going to handle this, and this is in relation to probably taking action tonight on a community survey that we've been talking about for a little while.
I hope so. We've been diligently at work with Baker Tilly and we've vetted questions. And if you remember, we shared with you in the past, got some feedback, got feedback from the cabinet and others. And what we have is a, well, pending board approval would be the final survey questions to send to Baker Tilly. We've refined it to within where they believe, you know, it's really important that they can get a phone survey done in about, approximately twelve to fifteen minutes. We've got the press release type stuff ready to go, pending board approval tonight, that would go tomorrow. And we want to let people know, you know, what would be coming in the community. But I'd love to answer if you've got any questions. Hopefully you've had some time to take a look, review those questions. We think we started with, I can't remember if it was fifty-two or fifty-four, and really refined and really went back through that process of, what is it we're asking, what information are we trying to gather? And how ultimately will that help us, you know, that information to approve the services to our students first and foremost, but to our community as well as a public school district. And so, we've looked at a variety of other surveys. Like I said, we've worked with Baker Tilly, they're experts in this, and I feel like we've got a good product here, so.
Questions from Mike? We've seen this now a couple of times, so it's not new.
I was a little surprised that we are only going to, or they are only going to interview likely voters. Because it says here to terminate. Are you registered voter? No, terminated.
Tell me where you're at on that, because question one.
Page one.
Actually, it just says are you registered, it doesn't say if you're going to.
Right, but then if they say no, you terminated.
Fairly standard in this country, sure.
Is it really?
Yeah.
So this is mostly about?
No, it's, it's.
I thought we want to know how people feel about the school.
We do, and what they're trying to do is get a representative sample from a database that is dependable. And that's tricky for them to do, but that's where, where they can get access to the information they need, the phone numbers and those type of things to do this type of survey. The Secretary of State's office and registered voters has the most complete databases. They have taken and run our database of parents and guardians with that to make sure that we'll have, that there be a representative percentage of parents and guardians as, you know, the percentage that would be in the total population of the school district in that database of registered voters. But that's where, that's where they can get verifiable, you know, data to do a phone survey. There just aren't other high-quality lists to do that. So I'm assuming they're getting it from the Secretary of State's office, even though it has it as a question. The vast, vast majority of them, the answer is yes, because that's where they got the data from.
So they're confirming.
So it's almost a no-type question if that.
I see what you're saying. So they're confirming when they already are pretty sure.
Because if somebody answers no, then they shouldn't have been, then it might not be the person they're calling. It's sort of a, yeah, it's not meant to be, it's not meant to be restrictive in that sense, even though it reads like that, but that's really the caller script.
Right, I realize that the person.
Do you remember, Mike, from our earlier discussions, what the end is, they want to get to, to provide the data that it will be scientifically valid?
Four hundred. And that gets, and we just wrote the press release, I think that gets you to a plus or minus, uh, four point, I think it was four point eight, six percent.
Yes.
And that's where, there was a, you know, we looked at different numbers and thought, you know, three hundred it was higher, four hundred was pretty typical of a, a quality survey of this nature. We wanted to do it well. And then beyond that, the value for money, it doesn't, you know, the numbers don't get that much better as you add more and more respondents. So that was kind of, you know, the sweet spot, if you will, that that, you know, quality survey, value for the money you're spending kind of all converge there.
Other questions?
God, I think it's a pretty straightforward deal.
And of course, our intent is to get a baseline here with the thought that this would then be replicated going forward. So it'll allow us to see how we are improving places we still need to improve, but move the needle over time.
Exactly. Yep, and we did take, and I know it's in the communication materials, that the plan is this is a benchmark, that we would do the same survey or very similar survey one year from now, and then again, a second year from now. And then we, we weren't sure, we'd had discussions and gotten feedback, and then I think the language says every two to three years after that, giving us, has some time to reflect on that.
Future boards can determine.
Yeah, exactly.
What frequency.
But a commitment that this is the first part of something that will be done longitudinally.
Yep. All right, I feel, my sense is that we've had enough time to think about this, that we're prepared to take action and prove this, in that way you guys can initiate.
Yeah, and the other good news, which I should have mentioned, is we were talking about mid-July originally. Because we've gotten our work done in an expedient and high-quality fashion, they expect, they're hopeful that they're going to start making phone calls on June twenty-fourth. So we're ahead of schedule.
I'd like the motion to approve this.
All second. Thank you. Any additional discussion? All those in favor, take a five by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes, you have your sit back.
Thank you.
Congratulations, and thank you to everyone who had a hand in this, I know it was.
Yeah, especially Ashley McCray's done fantastic work with this, our communications director.
I understand, first dinner here tonight, the fifth day.
I will, and they will, they'll begin sending out the information tomorrow, and they'll even, part of that is, you know, the caller ID of the phone number they expect the, the survey team to use. So if you, if they see that number pop up, they'll know who it is, and please answer.
Very important. I think I get that number out.
Yeah.
All right, let's move on to item seven point two. Julie, you want to come on up?
I do.
We're going to get a little overview of special education or partnering here in the district, which I think is very timely and always informative.
Yes, let me see if I can get on here. Well, tonight I really just put together a very kind of high-level overview of what our programs are. I know that many of you are familiar either from being on the board or having some students that might have gone through some of our programs. So it's more of that high level of what we're about tonight. If you see something that you want us to dig more deeply into and come back another time, or ask questions tonight, feel free. But I can also put together some things that look at certain aspects or categories of it, if you'd like to see more in another time. So to start with, our program or our department is more than just special education. Tonight I'm going to focus more on that special education piece, but we also have nursing and section five oh four under us. And again, if you want me to come back and talk a little bit more in depth of all those, that would be another time as well. Section five oh four is especially interesting because it's mandated but unfunded, completely unfunded. And it's becoming more and more complex in the sense that it's an evaluation. We can even assign service delivery and people to it now, which we've really not gotten too far into. But that's an unfortunate piece that we have all this that's not funded. It's like special ed, it's passed up. But really, I want to talk a little about who my team is. I've got a great team to work with, and I feel very fortunate that I have all the support from them. But Heidi Nissler is our Assistant Director of Special Services. I think most of you have met her, and she's been in the district for quite some time. She does an amazing job. She's very skilled when it comes to anything to do with technology. As well as she does a lot of our work with our budget, because that's a passion area of hers. And so she works closely with Jeff and looks at a lot of our budgets and makes sure that we're all balanced and keeps our spreadsheets up to date. She spends, she only oversees one building, which is high school. And that high school, as you know, is a big place for her to be. So she spends about half of her time there, and the rest of it with some district responsibilities as well. Gina Boots and Steph Batley are supervisors who are on our two hundred twenty-day contracts, and they're new this year. So we spent a lot of time mentoring the two of them. I've been impressed with the way they've been able to jump right in and not only handle some of the things that come action day to day, but really take control over some of the district responsibilities they have as well. Peggy Nerdall is also not new to the district, but new to her position, which is that health services supervisor. And she has done an amazing job as well. I wasn't sure how this was going to go because it's our first year with this position at all. And it's been a huge help to me because not having background, having somebody who can come in and take control over that and then come back and take part in our supervisor meetings has been great to keep things together. Like, you know, she talked to you guys about the dentistry clinics and all of the stuff for the hearing and the vision screening. So she's done a really nice job. We do have a coordinator who's a teacher on special assignment at the high school, Ben Finger. And he's also new to the position, he took over for Gina. So he's been learning the ropes as well and really starting to find his way. And then next year, we do, currently we have a point five ECSE coordinator. But as you guys know, next year we'll be looking to have that one point oh administrator that covers the entire building. And so they will take over that position as well. And part of what we use to fund her, to set the position, will then go to fund that piece of it at special ed. The only two people that I did put on here, and I needed two, but I'd already sent it to Sarah, didn't want to change it again. My two admin assistants, Sherri Lu Signan and Sue Scully, who without their support, we wouldn't be able to do what we do either. So I apologize to them and to you for not having them on here, but they're part of our team as well. Looking at who we serve, we currently serve about almost thirteen hundred students, which is like fifteen and a half percent of our total student population. That number to me is something that we need to take a look at. I feel it's a bit high. And so we're looking to work with our, we have MTSS committee, our multi-tiered system of support through the district, which really looks at our intervention systems from non-special ed standpoints. And we have a community together right now that involves us, but is also teaching and learning and other people in the district to kind of look at that intervention system and see if we can't start to intervene sooner with students and get them what they need before they do end up being discrepant enough that they qualify for services. I would like to see that a couple percentage points more in the future.
So has this been trending upward?
You know, we've been around here, give or take a percentage, for the last, almost since I've been in this position. But I think it has a lot to do with what I just talked about. We don't necessarily have right now that solid intervention system in place as far as what do we do when kids aren't getting the support they need. We have intervention staff, we've got teachers who are doing great jobs, but we're really also teaching them what does an intervention look like? And what does that research-based intervention look like? So they can track what the student is really needing. If it's in reading and they're a little bit, really looking at decoding, but what we're doing is obsolescence intervention, but it's a reading intervention, we're not getting to the right thing. So Nick has been working really hard with our staff, and they're diving into drilling down to what those students really need. So I feel like with our interventions beefing up, we're going to see that number decrease. And again, that'll take, this is kind of our baseline year, so seeing that trend down hopefully, where we track up in the next few years.
Okay.
Julie, it's been my impression, having been on the board now for a number of years, that we have a very good reputation in special education. That's to your credit, your team's credit, people before you. So I'm giving that as a compliment. Without trying to put you on the spot, can you give us some relativity of this for surrounding districts? Because again, my impression is that we're a little higher than surrounding districts. So it'd be helpful to kind of know roughly how we compare.
We, I don't know their exact percentages. I know that they range from, I would say, ten to even a little above us. However, let's say if we look at Eastern Carver County, Prior Lake, they're a little bit lower than we are. I think that's for a couple reasons. Prior Lake, for instance, has been working on their intervention system as well, and they're actually working with the state this year to do some of that. So they're trying to meet that up as well. But if we look at us still being the racially isolated district, some of that comes into play as well. So our, our percentages are a little higher. And as far as Eastern Carver County, I know every single district around us talks about their intervention systems and how they wish that they were stronger. Because if we see a student, say, in first grade, and they are struggling, and we need to intervene, and we do, or we don't, or they aren't quite, they aren't quite there where we, where they would qualify for special ed, give them two more years where now they would look discrepant because they're far enough behind. So do they really have a learning disability, or did we not quite intervene in the way that they needed? And that's where you don't, you never really know that for sure, because it might have shown, no matter what we did, and sometimes things got more difficult, their disability was just going to come out more. Or it might have been, gosh, if we just could have gotten them at this point, or when we have them in preschool, if we do that early intervention, would we have seen the growth that we needed to?
Julie, you mentioned something I don't know if everybody's aware of, or just kind of for definition purposes. Could you talk about the racially isolated district, or maybe if that's more of like, I know some of us have heard that several times over the years, but it's, it's definitely something else.
Tell me what that means, and Mike, jump in whenever you. Our district has a higher percentage of diversity than those around us. We are at, what, near forty percent right now, and the districts around us, I don't, I won't quote their percentages because I don't know. But we have a high enough percentage that the districts around us, it's discrepant enough, I guess, that we are considered the racially isolated district. And so that's why we get some of the A and I funds or the achievement integration funds, is because that's, our district is racially isolated district.
Now, also, are you doing any work with the equity department on any of this stuff, Forrest?
Um, not yet. This is, I used to do much more work with the equity department, but it was more helping them get off their, off the ground than with the special education piece. The part that we do work with them on is we've started to do the check and connect at the high school. So they have more of that adult, they can then, some kids that are at risk, they identify these students, and then they've got that adult that does the check and connect with them. So sometimes that's enough, especially if we're looking at more of the social-emotional piece than the academic piece. Ray does, and he's got a special ed background as well. He'll meet with us once in a while just to talk about certain students. Or if we have students who we think might just need more of that adult connection, not necessarily services, we'll hook them up with one of the equity specialists.
Okay.
But otherwise, I mean, who we serve, this is again, is kind of the basic piece. As we do go all the way down from birth to age five in our early childhood, our birth-to-three teachers really work in the home with the families because that's intended to be more of that family education time. So what they do is they service the student, but they really teach the parents or the caregivers, sometimes even in daycare, how to work with the students. Then for their three to five years old, they come on site, and they're more in our preschool programs. And they're, of all of our schools, that's the most inclusive school, because our students are really in all of the classrooms with a special ed teacher and a general ed teacher. And the special ed teachers not there all the time, yet they're very much inclusive in what they do. Next year will be the first year that we start to have more of that. And I'll talk a little bit about more of the center-based or pull-up program, even at early childhood. at early childhood, because we are seeing a significant rise in needs of our really young kids with either some highly aggressive behaviors or just really not having that social and emotional piece yet, that it's difficult for them to remain in the classroom with the three to five-year-olds even. So we'll have what's called a little sabers room and they'll be able to have a little bit more pull-out service in there. Elementary, middle, high school, obviously we've got programs and I'll talk again in a second about more of those. And then our transition program is really in partnership with Intermediative Treatment and that's for kids who are age 18 to 21 coming out of high school and still qualifying for services.
Julie, before you flip that slide. So birth to 21 mandated services that we provide?
Yep. Our staff, and I won't read through all of this, you guys can see it, but we have a lot of licensed staff in our department. We're all the way from teachers to OTs, PTs, school psychologists, school social workers, but we have a lot of non-licensed staff as well, paraprofessionals. We do have due process support secretaries in each of our buildings, which we're very fortunate to have because they schedule our IEPs, they make sure our timelines are met, they get all of our progress reports filed. So I don't know of our staff, we can't maybe realize how lucky we are to have these people, so we tell them often. And I'm very thankful to have them because like I said, it really keeps us compliant. So our programs, all of our buildings have a full continuous services through setting one through two. And what that means is kids who are serviced less than 60% of their day are serviced in their home schools. So what we serve, and this is just kind of the acronym soup that we get, but our students with autism spectrum disorder, DCD is our developmental cognitive delay, EBD are kids with that emotional and or social or behavioral disorder. OHD is a category that has grown and is sometimes the most difficult to program for because it's other health disability. So it could be that they're struggling with an academic gap. It could, most often, we find that it's the social or the behavioral piece. And we see a lot of ADHD in this category in students who qualify for that because it significantly impacts them at school. SLD is our specific learning disability. Speech, kids can either be serviced as only a student with a speech language disorder with articulation or something else, or it can be related service tapped onto another categorical disability. And then our related services are OT, which is occupational therapy, PT, physical therapy, DATE is developmental and adapted fiaid, and then speech. So kids can also qualify for DATE as related service, we can't qualify that as a standalone disability. And some of them that I don't have on here that are much lower incidence, or we do have our blind visually impaired, our students who are deaf or hard of hearing, some of our kids who are PI, which is physically impaired, and/or TBI, which is traumatic brain injury. And they're low incidence, so we do have Julie Phillips, who for traumatic brain injury and PI, she's also our assistive technology coordinator. So she services all assistive technology, but also our students with physical impairments and traumatic brain injuries. And then Joan Keane does our students who are deaf or hard of hearing, are visually impaired students we contract through Southwest Metro. She comes in. The cool thing is, Beth McGar is her name, she is also visually impaired, she is blind. And so she comes in with her, her service dog, Paige, who gets her on the schools. And she also has another adult with her who can drive her to all the different buildings she needs to get to, but she's been wonderful for students to see, you know.
So she's coming into our buildings?
Yeah, we contract through Southwest Metro, but she really just serves the shock team because we have enough kids.
Okay.
Our service models vary. We have pull-out classes, which can be a complete replacement curriculum. We have specialized instruction also in pull-out that doesn't replace a curriculum, but that's where kids might come to work on those IEP goals. We'll push into classrooms, which means, just what it sounds like, the special education teacher will push into a general class and either do some specialized instruction in a small group. Sometimes it's for that organizational piece where they're, they really need to be in where the kids are struggling and they can help to provide some of that support for skills that were already taught. A lot of those skills are taught in the resource rooms. So they might teach a student organizational strategy in the resource room and then make sure that they're applying it in, say, math class. Or they might teach them a reading skill in a resource room, but then go into their language arts class to make sure that it's something that they're applying in the actual situation.
So is the resource room just a version of a pull-out?
Sometimes, yeah. The pull-outs, resources always pull-out, yes.
Yes, okay.
It's not a replacement class.
Right, but it's, by definition, you're pulling them off.
Co-taught is taught by a special ed teacher and a general ed teacher in the same room. And there are many different models of that. It can be truly half and half, so teach, they each teach half of the curriculum. Sometimes it's more of that, the special ed teacher pulls kids for small groups and just does specialized instruction. Maybe one day the special ed teacher takes the whole class and the general ed teacher is there for support. So there are a lot of different models.
What grade levels is co-teaching being used?
Mostly six through 12. However, we do in some of our elementaries, when they will, like for math or for special studies, when they'll go from teacher to teacher, one of our special ed teachers will push into that, but it's not typically a full co-taught model where they're there every single day. It might be for a week, it might be for a day.
We've been doing co-teaching for quite some time. Do we have any kind of measure about the success of that program?
You know, that's a really good question, Julie, and I think it goes, people see pros and cons. It's hard to measure. What we have learned is we need more training and our teachers are getting some of that this summer. Madeline Friend, not forever ago, came in when I first came into a coordinator position. And they came and did some training for us. And then we didn't really follow up with this. And so that's what we're finding now is our teachers, our co-teaching pairs are changing. And so they, some pairs haven't even had training. So this summer, our specialized teachers and our general ed teachers are getting some training. If we could get both pairs to be at the training, that didn't always work because of various things with the summer, but yeah. I would talk a little bit, make sure, I don't, what I didn't have on here, and I thought I did, was talking a little bit more about those center-based programs. So I'll come to this slide in a second. But a center-based program is a student who's in a pull-out situation, setting three for greater than 60% of their day. And I can see that.
I thought it was the slide before.
I skipped a slide?
Right there.
Go ahead.
Who thought it was a test?
I was talking, it wasn't a test, Reggie, good job, you passed. These are our setting rate, excuse me, center-based programs. Next year will be the first year that each elementary building will house two center-based programs. For the most part, they are the same program and we did that very intentionally so they could plan together, if we've got various levels of students, even within our center-based programs, some with more functional needs and some with some functional academic needs or what have you, they might be able to do some of that cross-teaching, really look at their PLCs, kind of like we will, like we do in any class and say, you know, this is a group of students who's really understanding this piece of functional math. But we have some kids down here who still are really working on other pieces. So they can talk and form groups that way. So we're pretty excited about that. I think it'll take us a year or two for them to get used to that, but they can really partner that way. Our new program, which is our center-based EBD program, the second one we added this year, will be at Sweeney and they'll be the only school that has two programs that aren't the same. But we are also intentional in that because ASD and the EBD programs, often we'll see some similar behavior needs, although you program very differently for those two groups. Those two teachers will have the support of, you know, this is behavior, I'm saying, do you have any ideas to support me and vice versa. East will continue to have two DCD programs and one ASD center-based program. And West, which was new this year, will have still a DCD program and the EBD center-based program. And the high school gets them all. So they have programs for every single type of center-based program, EBD, ASD, DCD.
So for these students, that's a non-neighborhood school?
Yes. Some might just by chance be in their neighborhood school. And that's, that was a struggle for, when we moved, because we did move a DCD program from Sweeney to SunPath this year. And again, very intentionally so students and teachers could plan a program together. But it was difficult for some of those families and it's always the first couple of groups through that it's a big struggle because they are the ones that have to make the sacrifice for the good of kids in the future and the district. And, you know, it makes sense to us because it makes sense for kids, but when that's your student who has to make the changes, it's a really, really big deal. So that was, that was a lot of understanding from some parents and a lot of trepidation and some anger for some, and understandably so.
Julie, I have a really very specific question. It's just, I'm curious about, as you were making the presentation, and I don't think I'm gonna answer. You talked about level one, level two, if I heard you right, was up to 60% of the day?
In general ed.
Okay. What I'm curious about is why, you can have a student who is 55, 59%, so the majority of the time, why have they made the division at 60? I could see 50, but 60 doesn't make any sense to me.
It has to do with, and I don't know why they did it 60 and not 50, to be honest, because I'll tell you that some of our students who are in that high setting two, we service seven center-based programs. It doesn't mean, if you looked at our center-based programs across the board, the majority of the kids on their IEP will stay setting three. But we do have some kids who are high setting two because they are those kids who are at 50 to 59% and they really are sort of better within a center-based program. Means they probably spend more time with their general ed peers. But yeah, this gets into how they calculate minutes and it's kind of a...
No, it just struck me that a logical break would be the majority of your time is one or the other and why, who knows why?
But a logical thing would also be to fully fund special ed when it's mandated. So what's good?
Who said for your office you would have a logical break? Okay.
But kind of another interesting point on that is if you could have a student in a co-taught class and a special ed teacher's in there the whole hour, because they're with general ed peers, it doesn't count toward setting. So anytime you see setting three, it means that amount of time is spent away from the general ed peers. So if they're in a fiaid class or a teacher pushes in, or there might be a paraprofessional, their minutes might be high enough, but they're not in a true setting three because they're with general ed peers. This is fun. We're always a little nutty in my department.
That's why I asked Julie a lot of questions.
Yes.
It's because kids don't come in nice neat little packages.
No, they don't.
You are.
Some of the parents that you have to deal with, they can be nutty too.
I'm telling them how a few naughty. Not me. Of course not, the present company excluded. I will say, however, my favorite part of graduation, this is going to a little rogue, was the hug you got, the little like flip.
Yep.
Classic Julie.
Yeah, I have a picture of him hugging Ray Battner the same way at the football banquet. Anyway, just a real quick overview of the evaluation process of what special ed process is, because this gets to be really confusing for parents and teachers as well, and sometimes a little frustrating because of the time it takes. But the evaluation, once we actually get permission back, can take 30 school days to complete and typically does because we have so many kids to evaluate. But before they even get to that point, they go through the IEP process, which is our intervention team process. And then we try interventions to make sure that we really feel like we can't do something before an evaluation. And once we figure out, no, we still need to do something else, then we call an evaluation pre-planning meeting and the parents come in and they talk about what it's going to look like. Then the parents have 14 days to decide and get that back, whether or not the kids...
Oh, no.
Yes.
Yeah.
And so it's very time-consuming and can be frustrating experience, although the intent is really to make sure if we're saying students have a disability and need specialized services, we know for sure that that's what we need to do. But when you get to the point, there's a kid who, yep, that kid was going to qualify and you still have to control, it can be frustrating, yet it gives us good information. And we currently use MDE eligibility criteria. We may be looking at doing some more when we have a stronger NTS, about NTS system and about some other ways of looking at eligibility, but you just question Paul.
Yeah, can you just kind of explain what some of these intervention programs look like?
Yeah, you know, it can really vary. If I take a student, they, they might be looking for an emotional behavior disorder. We might, we would have the school psychologist, maybe even an EBD teacher on the team to say, you know, the student's really having a hard time, something very simple, sitting in their seat. So we would develop an intervention that has some research behind it that's worked before to say, we're either going to do something as simple as we're going to put a stop sign on their desk. And when the teacher, if they're out of their seat or if they're talking out of turn, the teacher will point to it. Were they able to, with some direction, regulate that behavior over a six-week period of time or what have you? So that could be one. It could be a reading intervention where they're looking at fluency and they have a student come in and do some running records with the intervention teacher with their teacher on why the teacher is getting the other group set, doing something else. And then they'll look to see if that had a positive effect, did the student make progress? If they made progress, then we know we just need to keep going with more interventions. If they didn't, and we look for two research-based interventions over about six weeks of time, so that's another long period of time. If they're not making progress and that's documented, then we know we may need to move to a special education evaluation to see if there's something else going on with the student that we just need to look at it a different way.
Okay.
And those are two pretty kind of simple examples, but...
I'm sure it gets much more in depth than that, but...
And add on to that, the teacher's trying to do, run her group, trying to do all these other things for his groups. And so it, it takes some time and we've really been able to teach with NICA's help and some of the coaches, teach people how to do quality interventions. And so that's been a huge plus. So once we get through all of that, if the student qualifies, a parent can either at that time decide, yes, we're going to move on with services or no, we don't. If they say, no, we don't, we're done, we can't do anything. We can't write, well, we could write the IEP, but they don't have to accept it. If they say yes, we write the IEP. And that really consists of what's a present level of performance, which talks about how the student is doing throughout their day, brings in that evaluation criteria, and then goals and objectives based on whatever area they qualified in. And all this, we always talk about a golden thread, the evaluation should flow into the IEP because the team tells us here are the needs based on where they qualified. And that's where our goals and objectives stem from. And then we look at a combination of modifications that need, that the student needs in order to help them reach those goals or to access their general education classes. LRE is the least restrictive environments. And that's something we have to be very aware of because the students need to be educated by law in the least restrictive environment, reading as much as possible with their general ed peers. And sometimes it's, the least restrictive environment is in that center, that center, excuse me, setting three program because with their peers is too much for them. And then the service grid just lines, outlines exactly how many days a week, how much time will be serviced to the students. Now, after that first IEP and we go on to the annual IEP every year, when a student first qualifies, we send home that initial IEP, we cannot start to service that student until a parent signs and says, yes, you can start to service my students. They have 14 days, but even past that 14 days, if it's the first IEP, we can do nothing. If it's an annual IEP and they are already in service, we send home the IEP. And what's called a prior written notice outlines our meeting. And a parent signs yes or no. But if they don't within 14 days, we can then implement the IEP because they're already in service. Typically we don't do that. We reach out to parents and try and get the information back. And sometimes parents will collect no. And that means we have a conciliation meeting and they come together and talk about what it is that they disagreed with in the document. And most of the time, we can come to an agreement. Sometimes it's just an explanation. Sometimes we can't. And then MDE comes in, will help us with mediation or facilitated IEP. And those are few and far between, but we found the process to be helpful when we have to use it. And unfortunately, if we get past all that, we go to due process hearing, which we only had to do once since I've been here, which was a lot of fun, it was right in this room.
If a parent refuses services, is there some documentation that supports that? I'm just thinking, future lawsuits or something?
Yes. We are documented to the hilt. If a parent signs no, then within 10 days, we have to reach out and offer a conciliation meeting. Now, they don't have to say yes to that. If there's something, there's just a miscommunication or they don't understand, we can talk on the phone and if it gets worked out, then they, we send a new document home and they sign it and we move on. But otherwise, everything is used fed forms, first to the Information Center for IEPs. It's all laid out in there, communication logs, dates, times, timestamps, so yeah.
So you're saying even, I'm saying that the first time when they say, we think maybe your student needs to have special ed services, so it isn't just they're denying the IEP, they're denying, I don't want my kid in special ed. So even that is documented as well?
Yes, and let me tell you. Yes, and let me tell you, I am very, very thankful when our teachers are diligent with that stuff because not only has it helped us to go back and just speak with parents about, there's only a year and year and year and year and year, it's also helped us in the case of legal action. We did do this, this is why it's provided. Any other questions for you?
I don't have any questions for you because I've been in my life for so long, but if you can speak on it today or some other time, could you talk to us a little bit about, we know how hard it is to get staff from special ed, the partnership that you guys have been doing with Southwest Metro?
Yeah, if you, I mean, I think with a couple minutes now, if you guys want to.
Sure.
Actually, I'm really excited about this. Started to realize we need more teachers, which you don't have to do our two-by-four that many times before we realize we don't have special ed staff. We have been taking paraprofessionals and have two-year degrees or four-year degrees, excuse me, and getting them what's called a tier-two license and just trying to fill our positions any way we can. So started talking a little bit with Natasha, we actually met with U of M and St. Thomas, and St. Thomas just kind of fit our needs better. So what we have right now is it's called Work and Learn and it's, once we met with St. Thomas, I realized we probably weren't going to be able to do it alone because we need twenty people to be in a cohort, fifteen to twenty, they say, but they let twenty, twenty-five being the max. So I reached out to Melanie Cray at Southwest Metro and we talked about all of the member districts of 288 coming together to try and build a cohort, so that's what we've done. We've had a lot of meetings with St. Thomas and now that it's up and running, it's a two-year program. You have to have a four-year degree in order to be a part of it. When teachers come out of it, they will have a master's degree and a licensure, an ABS, which is academic behavioral strategist, or they can go on and get EBD or ASD license as well. And Southwest Metro is requiring that because they're a setting four program and they want them to be more specialized. We're saying either one works. So it starts next spring, it'll actually be housed at our high school, so Shockley is hosting. What we're really targeting are paraprofessionals who have four-year degrees and would like to explore this, or not explore it anymore, do it, and or general ed teachers who are thinking they might want to teach special ed, then they can go through the program as well. The really cool thing and the reason we went with St. Thomas over to U was they can do their internship or student teaching right on the job. And so most of what they're doing is kind of the on-the-job training and the classes take a smaller percentage of the time, whereas it's the opposite when you go through the other programs. So we have, we have a responsibility in this as well. We have to find mentor teachers. Melanie Cray and I will be the administrators who are really making sure that we meet the needs of all of the candidates. And they, it's a reduced credit load and a reduced cost through St. Thomas as well. So currently, I think we have five registered from Shockley. We're up to, last email I got like twelve, so we had to do one more kick, but I just signed two more endorsement letters today. So I'm really excited. So it's kind of grow your own program. Some of our teachers are already teaching with a tier-two license because they have a four-year degree. And now, once they're enrolled in a licensure program for special ed, we can hire them. So we'll be able to keep them on for next year and they get to teach as they go through classes and they have those mentor teachers right beside them.
And do you have to get to the fifteen though for this program to go live? I heard you say twelve.
Yeah. Now, that was before, like I said, I signed two today. They, really people can register anytime, but we're timed out a little bit because they do have to take the educational test before they can be enrolled in the program. They don't have to pass all three parts, but they have to attempt them and they have to continue to take them until they pass them in order to get the licensure.
Oh, and they have to do that?
They really have up until they start their student teaching. But what's nice about St. Thomas also is they have bootcamps. And so if you're struggling, same with the math portion, which is what most people struggle with if they're going to, they have a bootcamp that you can go to and they have tutors there that will help you and it's free of charge, so. If they want to pass it, they really should be able to pass it.
You said this was next spring to start?
Yeah, however, because they'll be enrolled and they're in a program, we can still hire them. And we've already planned out two or three different dates that we're going to get them together, if nothing else, to do some question and answer or some team building, because this will be their cohort for the next two years, so it'll be their support system, plus hopefully something for us to continuously pull stuff from, so. Yeah, I'm pretty excited, it's kind of cool.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you Julie for coming in.
Excellent.
You guys do a phenomenal job. As you know, Jake's one weird result that we couldn't be happier, so.
I hear those kind of comments from parents all the time in the district. Something I'm always proud of.
Well, thank you. We have really good staff working with us and they care a lot about kids and as long as we can keep caring about them, it's going to work. Thank you.
If anybody wants an example of what an IEP looks like, I have plenty I could pass out.
Yeah.
Paper or room?
Yeah, we get proud, between Angela and I, we probably get papers every office.
Just with your parental rights, we give you overtime.
Thank you Julie.
Thank you.
For all you guys do. All right, I think we're at home stretch here. I don't think we have any other action items. And for our other, I'll go left. So Angela, do you have anything to say?
All I have is graduation was great as always. I also attended transitions graduation. We had four kids from Shockley that graduated to life, so it was a good week.
Matt?
Graduation was fantastic. Personnel committee, we hadn't had a meeting, but we are, Keith has sent out the superintendent feedback survey. Please do participate. That is going to people who are directly correct me if I'm wrong, it's Mike, it's cabinet principals and us as school board members.
Yep, and I agree to the assistant principals as well.
Assistant, yeah. And then we have a personnel committee meeting, I think August twelfth is on there. And that's when we will be reviewing it and then bringing it back. We'll probably report it out that evening, so that's when the public can expect feedback. And just to remind you, it was only half a year for Mike. It seems like you've been here for quite a long time, that's a, that's a good sign. So, yeah, that's the process.
Sarah?
Not good, thanks.
Council? Okay, Bob?
I just wanted to share with everybody that, you know, we do have a youth development services program in our district. Adam Wardin, who's come here before you with the destination imagination, kids boarding, et cetera, she leads a lot of our efforts for the student presentation here brother tonight. So anytime you guys might be interested in hearing the sort of what she does, the program she does and the future collaborations in the county, then be, be more than we have to do best.
Good example.
Good idea.
Yeah. Paul?
Just the old floating on cloud nine from Saturday night, so.
That's the best part of being on a school board, is those kind of events. Joe?
Yeah, being able to give, Paul would agree, being able to give a child their diploma cover is like, won't go down as one of the highlights of my life.
Yeah, that's special. That's special. Judy?
Nothing.
I have nothing of it to say, but special ed graduation, it came off without a hitch and it's always a fun event, so I think all the preparation that goes into that. Mike?
I would just say that today, like every day, is a great day to be a saver.
Very nice. All right, so you can see the list of upcoming meetings, our next business meetings on the twenty-fourth. Judy will be chairing that because I'm actually out of town.
And I know you'll all keep me in line because last time I forgot a few things and you let me know right away.
Well, you know, as long as we hear the gavel.
Oh, I did that part on, I practiced.
Yeah, well, so I guess there's a question, so we have our, of our two annual retreats, the summer retreat. It's currently listed five to nine. Is that suitable for everybody or do we...
Five to nine on Monday.
Monday, July eight.
Or are we going to go four to eight?
I thought we landed at five.
Okay.
Five works better for me.
Other than work purposes.
Yeah.
All right. It's five to nine. Again, it's several different community meetings, we still have the task force that's ongoing. But there's really nothing else to highlight on there. So with that, I will look for an adjournment tonight's meeting. Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Thank you, Paul.
Second.
Thank you, Joe. All those players, sign them to say aye.